Good evening. Good evening and welcome. Today is Monday, June 3rd, 2019. This is a workshop of the Board of Education. If we could please start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, and thank you for being here this evening. We do have a little bit of a few missing board members, and I do apologize. We have one who is traveling on business in Europe unexpectedly, was just scheduled the end of last week. And we also have one who is in the city tied up and couldn't get here in time for the meeting, so we do apologize. We do have a wonderful presentation scheduled, so we're going to start tonight with Mr. Marash, our elementary school principal. Good evening, Mr. Marash.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to be very, very brief. Last, I think our last Board of Ed meeting, we highlighted writing revolution. And we wanted to extend upon that a little bit and talk about poetry. So poetry is something that we celebrate at Cottle. And our students, we have three amazing Cottle Cubs here who have written three incredible poems that they're very excited to share with you. But first, I want to hand it over to Maureen Coleman, Mrs. Coleman, third grade teacher. These are three of her students. She's going to tell you a little bit about partner poetry. Take it away, Ms. Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Marash. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Coleman.
Anywhere you want. I'm especially happy to be here to share our Cottle Cub poetry excitement. Particularly, this was noticeable in the month of April, which is National Poetry Month. And in the past, we've had students who have written original poems, read poems of published poets, or worked on partner poems, which I'll explain in a moment, to read them aloud in the morning after announcements. But this year, with the help of Mr. Marash and Mr. Kilgallen, we doubled up and we had morning and afternoon readings. And at least 50 students in Cottle came up with poems, found poems, wrote poems, and they shared them with the whole school, which was fantastic. So these ladies are going to read some of their partner poems. And how that works is, on a Monday in our class, we get a poem, a published poet's poem. And they take the idea, the flow, the rhythm, the rhyming scheme and things like that. And this is how we learn about the elements of poetry. And then they make it their own. They choose the topic. They come up with very fancy language. And there's a lot of enthusiasm. So I am happy to introduce our first poet, Chloe Clark. We'll tell you.
What is Pink? By Chloe Clark. Pink is a tulip, a raspberry, a feather from a flamingo, a heart, the prettiest color you can say, a dancing rose and numb tooth, and a sunset that calms the sky. Pink is peaceful. Pink is light. It is bittersweet, and you can see it mixed with white. Pink is brave. Pink is my notebook. It's the brightest butterfly in a spring flower. Pink is a grapefruit, also a jelly bean. Pink is jazzy, and it is easy to be seen. Pink is the fur of a pink fox, the nicest crayon in the box. And in the summer, when the flowers are blooming, pink is the sound of fireworks booming.
And this is Jennabelle McKay. Who'll be reading about?
Spring. Spring by Jennabelle McKay. Here comes grass and clover. We can see that winter's over. Butterflies delight, return to the daylight. Blue days in the day, and we all say, "Hooray!" A shooting star in the sky. Merrily, merrily, we welcome spring. Little boy full of joy, little girl in a dress that twirls. Flowers that bloom, so do you. Hummingbirds hum. Out of the ground, flowers come. Merrily, merrily, we welcome spring. Baby llama, say hi to your mama. Come close to my white wool. Walk with me through, or let me kiss your cute face. Merrily, merrily, we welcome spring.
Last but not least, Kate Wrightout.
Summer Morning by Catherine Wrightout. Summer is the queen of pools. Also, drumroll please, New School. People jump in special day. We can go, oh, the pool is so much fun, hooray! We can go and play outside. You will seek and I will hide. Summer, summer also is for sleeping late. And when I arise, there are Nutella crepes on my plate. There is a day when summer has set, and that's the only day I regret. Oh, summer, you are my fave, especially because my birthday is on one of your days.
Thank you. That was wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Coleman, for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Stiefel, middle school principal.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Stiefel. How are you?
I'm well, thanks. How are you? It's good to be here. This evening, I get to the really unique pleasure of recognizing a group of students that have had a really positive impact on our school this year. The strings program at the middle school is growing, and it's getting better every single day, led by Mr. Duchateau. This particular group of students was here during open house where they changed the first few moments of the evening and welcomed everyone with some incredible music. And I also want to recognize them because of the work that they did and the songs that they played during our recent Memorial Day commemoration, setting the tone once again for an event with their incredible gifts and ability to play strings. So without anything further from me, they're going to play a very small selection for you.
Wonderful.
Please, Mr. Duchateau.
You can fill this space right over here. And Mr. Duchateau, if you'd like to say a few words to introduce them, that would be awesome.
So should I? So if I was going to just say a few words when Mr. Stiefel spoke to me about recognition night and all the awards things that were going on, the one thing that was in my head is there's a core, which you're looking at, of students that I have the pleasure of working with who, I actually was just speaking with one of their parents recently. I try to tell them fairly regularly that I do not take for granted how lucky I am to have this particular group. And I think individually, they're all very driven and creative and full of energy. And somehow, the synergy of them together, they feed off of each other and inspire each other. And I've been equally inspired by them. And I also tell them, we're able to do, they do very difficult things, and I keep finding music for them each time. And I've told them, they're like hungry lions. Like, I think I have something for them that's going to occupy us for a good part of the semester, and I give it to them. And after one day, I think, oh, my gosh, we have to find something else. Because they're just anxious to learn. And so I'm completely honored and just, you know, they deserve great recognition for the great kids that they are. So let's. And without further ado, we're going to play an excerpt from, we did arrangements of the pieces by Anthonyne Dvorak. It's the New World Symphony. And it's themes from that. And we're going to do a section of that sort of through the middle section, which starts with a very famous melody, which people also know as a folk song called Going Home. And then it's got a section that they like to call the Jaws section. And you'll understand why. And they get to play all the fireworks and fast stuff. So here we go. Can I just, the only other thing that I meant to say at the beginning as we were playing, the one thing that I just wanted to say is thank you to the district, to the board, to our principals, and to our superintendent to create a strings program. Because there are not many schools or districts that are adding arts programs, and we don't take that lightly. We're so thrilled to be here and to have the opportunity. So we thank you for that.
Mr. D., I think you're going back to rehearsal?
Very dedicated.
No, no, no. I just need to say how impressive that was and what a treat. Thank you. I mean, the acoustics here aren't too bad. So I think we need to have you back. But to our students, I hear you practicing all the time. I have the luxury of having you right next door. I know how hard you work to be this good. And, Mr. D., I know you thanked us. And of course, we support your program. But really, really, the growth and the progress and the vision comes from you as their teacher. And then I look over to Ms. Coleman and her amazing students. And the poetry that you're producing in third grade is just outstanding. I could visualize spring and summer and all the excitement of your poem and the colors. So I just want to thank all three of you. You were fantastic. And you write poetry for an audience. You don't just write it to keep it to yourselves. So we're so happy that you took time to come out. Your parents joined you, and you came to share your poems with such a great audience. And we'll even air this on TV so some people at home could watch the amazing work that you're doing. So again, I just, from the bottom of my heart, Ms. Coleman, keep up the wonderful work. And thank you all for joining us. You're welcome, parents, too. The next presentation is high school. And, Mr. Colaswano, we have a wonderful internship program. However, we do know there's a lot going on this time of year, and they may want to get to bed. So you're welcome to stay, but we're not offended, of course, if you take the children. Okay? No offense, Mr. Colaswano. Your presentation is going to be great. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Thank you. All right. Next up, Dr. Linehan.
Thank you. I echo Mr. Abellis' compliments to the previous presenters. Great job. I thought we'd switch it up a little bit and switch from the arts to college and career readiness. Careers obviously are critical. Preparing students for careers are a critical component of high school. So we're in our third year of internship program. Thank you to the board for approving that. Earlier in the year, I presented the software package the guidance department uses and I use in the business club to make students aware of their careers. For our seniors, we give them the availability of going out and actually experiencing what a real career is like and to give them an idea of what choices they have to make as they go to college. Sometimes, they go and find out they don't like the choice they made, and they obviously change their majors or their pursuit in their career life. And other times, they embrace it and really, it solidifies what their passion may be. So I'll invite Mr. Colaswano. He's done an amazing job in his third year, a lot of coordination. And I think when you see his data, you'll agree with me. Mr. Colaswano?
Good evening, everyone. I, too, want to just take a second to thank the Board of Education for supporting this program, as well as the superintendent. And then also, Dr. Linehan and Mr. Abellis for their leadership in the high school to make this all happen. But this is just to provide a brief update on the internship program and where we started and sort of where we've come today. So the internship program was reinstated in the spring of 2017. We did sort of a pilot program that year where we had 27 participating seniors. The next year, in 2018, we saw an overwhelming growth in student participation where we had 60 out of 72 seniors participate in that year. Since we've had that growing enrollment in participation, we've had to adjust our calendar a little bit. So we actually start this process with the internship program in the fall, where we have introductory meetings to introduce the students to what this is all about, as well as to give out program applications and then parent consent forms as well. Those applications are essential to guiding the rest of the process where students, the two main components of the applications are for students to let us know what their interests are, and then also to give us an opportunity to understand if they have transportation to their sites or not. And then that helps guide me to find the best possible placements. In the winter, students do select a faculty mentor that they will keep in touch with once a week once the internship program does begin. This provides our faculty to really stay in touch with the seniors and provide our seniors with an outlet from inside of the school to share what's going on in their internship and the process that's occurring. Student resumes are also a big part of this. Many of our site sponsors do require resumes. And Ms. Heinsohn in the high school does work with our seniors on those resumes, which is great. And it really shows how this is really a comprehensive program that really involves a lot of people. Then in the spring, we do start to select site sponsors. Students do take their final exams for all of their core courses, as well as their AP exam. So students are not approved to begin their internships until they are ready for graduation. And then lastly, all teachers must sign off on each student. Just some program requirements. Students need to commit 20 hours per week to their site. They meet weekly with that faculty mentor that I mentioned earlier. They maintain accurate time sheets with both their site sponsors and faculty mentors. They maintain a journal. They do this on a daily basis, which they provide their experiences and accomplishments. And then lastly, at the end of the program, they do deliver an oral presentation to a committee of teachers, myself, administrators, and other classmates, which is a great time to see and the students showcase what they've been working on for the past six or so weeks. This school year, we do have 51 participating seniors. It is a smaller class, this graduating class, but it comes out to about 89% of the current senior class. Students began their internships as early as May 6th, so many have been out for three to four weeks at this point. Other students, as I mentioned before, students are not approved to begin until they are ready to graduate. So we do have staggered start dates after that first release date. Students will be out until June 12th, and they'll have their presentations ranging from the 13th through the 17th. Here's a list of a lot of our placements for this school year. I really have to give credit to these sites. A lot of them have been with us for three years now, which is great. Some of them are new this year. Some of them are new last year. And it's a compliment to this community and how they're willing to help out the local school district. I just have some pictures. These are from last school year, which I thought was really nice. The top two pictures are two of our interns with the Tuckahoe Police Department, who, again, have been with us for three years. The bottom left is Adamo Morano of Community Designs with one of our interns. On the bottom right is Anthony Polero, an alumni of the school district with Totally Wired Electric, hands-on, one of our interns, working on a job site. On the next slide, we have a senior working at Concordia College. To the right of her, we have a student at Axiom Occupational and Physical Therapy Plus down in the village. On the bottom left, we have a senior intern at the Woburg Senior Living Facility. And on the bottom right, we do have a student at a local dentist office on Route 22. I did receive two pictures from this school year, which I thought was nice, and I could share them. On the left-hand side, we have one of our seniors in a placement at William E. Cottle School. And I do always try to give a shout-out to the Cottle teachers, who, Ms. Coleman is one example, who has done this for three years now, and it's really great. And then on the right-hand side, we have two seniors at Eastchester High School in physical education placements. I do have a video last year, one of our interns, very gifted as far as making videos and technology goes. He did put together this video sort of, and I played it this year for our interns in the beginning. And I would just like to play it. It's two minutes. All right. And again, I want to thank the board, thank the superintendent, Dr. Linehan, Mr. Abellis, for all the support. And this year, we've gotten great feedback so far. I sent out an email about halfway through to check in. And if I can visit, I visit most. And the feedback's been exceptional. So it's a credit to our students. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say, it's also a credit to you because I know that you are always, everything I see you do, you're so enthusiastic. And I know for the kids, that enthusiasm really gets the buy-in. So give yourself a credit, too, because unbelievable.
Thank you. I will say, I also really, for you to have expanded this program the way you have, I remember when we did pilot it in 2017. The nice thing about that at that time was that came to the board actually through the students. It was our representation from the class officers of the class of 2017 came to a couple of board meetings, not just one. And they were passionate about getting this going. And to find you at really a very late date in that year, and you were able to put something together, and I believe it was over 20 students at that time, started out, and from day one, it was well done. So really, hats off to you. A very impressive list of opportunities for our students. I did notice one of the students from last year who had the mechanical drawings is a engineer major. He was our salutatorian last year. So really, it is very much in line with what they are interested in and really amazing opportunities. This is really the best I have seen with this program in many, many years. So really, absolutely outstanding job. Thank you.
And if I could just add, Andrew, from me personally, you built this program. As Michelle said, you piloted it. And to see what it has become and the range of placements that you have for our students, the feedback is always positive. And like you said, even when a student is in a field or in a placement that they decide, okay, this is not for me career-wise, but they're still learning, and there's so many valuable lessons, your organization is impeccable, really. And that you're able to pull this off year after year and improve upon it is a testament to your hard work and dedication. Thank you.
And thank you to all the principals tonight for bringing students forward to us. And I think the most important thing about tonight, a night like this, is for our community outside of this room and outside of this building to see where we are investing and where we are putting our money. Because for our board meetings, they could be pretty boring most of the time. And they see us just raising our hand, time after time after time. But this is what we are raising our hand for, for the writing revolution, for this internship program, for the strings program. So we thank the administration for bringing these recommendations to us. We are thrilled to support them, but more important, to show our community what it's all about. Because I really think that sends a much broader message, what our students are doing, what's happening in the buildings, what's happening in the classrooms. And this is the way to do it. So thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. I really think it's a very, very important message to our community. So I thank you.
And feel free to come back anytime. Because it makes it much more enjoyable for us as well.
Okay. Yes. And now we have our presentation from Ms. Judy Wilson. And this is a very exciting part of our strategic planning going forward.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And so good to be with so many familiar faces this evening. First, I have to say what a privilege it was and is this evening to feel the energy and the forward motion as you highlighted such beautiful work. Unsolicited, as someone from outside of the Tuckahoe community who also has the privilege of being in many, many school districts every year, the three programs that were highlighted this evening, not just the individual students, who were remarkable. But programmatically, these are programs in 2019 that model and rival the best of any large or small public and private school. They're really remarkable. So those of my colleagues who have heard me talk about Tuckahoe in the last year have heard me say, like, "Small and mighty." It's amazing. And you really, when you're close to a community and you're embedded in it and you don't know others, sometimes, you know, speak for myself, it's easy to take something for granted or to not realize the gems that are right in front of you. So had to say that unsolicited, but it was really a- So had to say that, unsolicited, but it was really a privilege to see your students' work and the professional work, leading and guiding them and supporting them to such high levels. So feeling that positive forward energy will lead us right into a brief overview of the work that you've done in the last nine months, developing a strategic plan and action plans for four important goals. So I'm going to take just a few minutes, very few, to give the background, and then where you are tonight as you launch forward into the work around these important goals. I also want to say that when you think about your mission, right, so your mission statement, I'm sure everyone in this room can actually recite the mission statement of preparing every student for excellence. In the nonprofit world, we call what you just witnessed with your three groups of students "mission moments," like as you prepare students for excellence. But excellence really only occurs with focus, and your musicians will say that, your poets will say that, your internship students, it took great focus. And your organization as a public school system will always be very, very busy, a board member, superintendent, faculty member, principal, student. There is no shortage of things to pay attention to, work to be done, research to follow, and you can have 185 extremely busy days a year, and year after year, decade after decade of busyness, all good things, but without focus, you'll just ricochet, right? There'll be a little of this and a little of that, and things will come and go, and maybe the impact of your hard work won't be felt. So Daniel Goldman really refers to focus as the hidden driver of excellence, and that's what forming a strategic plan is all about. Resources are limited, no matter where you are in the world, so taking that resource of time and the budget and the good stewardship of taxpayers' money is critical when you decide on what should we focus these resources and these talents as a major resource. So your 1,200 or so students already know the benefit of being well-known. They're very well-known, and that's a treasure. Your PTA is a remarkable support system, beyond most. You've created great opportunities for children. You've realigned your leadership roles very well. You've provided new opportunities, those you saw this evening, as well as girls lacrosse and hour of coding, early work on STEAM. You've passed a referendum, and you've got a great conversation going about innovation. So where does all that take you so that you don't work in dribs and drabs and bits and pieces and have things that are not connected? It takes you to thinking about your young ones. You're about to shake hands with 60-some 2019 graduates in just three weeks, and as you do that, you are welcoming the class of 2032 into the kindergarten class. Your children ages seven to 22 right now are the Gen Z generation, and they need and want something different than what we have traditionally provided in schools, even the best of schools like Tukahoe. They are our Generation Z students, the most diverse student body our nation has ever seen. They're twice as likely to have had parents who are college graduates. They're more likely to live in cities, they're more focused on equity and fairness, they're more connected because of that little phone in their pockets all of the time, and they're more anxious. We know that about our seven to 22-year-olds. So how do you, as the Tukahoe Public Schools, best serve them? And that's the question of the strategic plan. So if we go back to the fall very quickly, the board made a decision not to set its own goals in a private workshop setting or a public workshop setting, not to simply go with goals that a small group of administrators designed, but rather to be very inclusive and to have many, many voices in the process of feeding decisions for goals. So there were interviews and public forums, forums with students, forums with members of the community. There were 10 electronic online surveys, for which you had close to 1,200 respondents in Tukahoe, really pretty remarkable. The core team of representatives, who represented parents, board members, administrators, teachers, and student voice, came together for two days in January to look at all of that data, and to also look at standardized achievement data, as well as an analysis of gaps in achievement over time, where children are excelling, where children are struggling, and what the needs are programmatically. They really, truly reflected on student voice and parent voice from those surveys as they also balanced statistical data. And at the end of that process, decided that the focus should be in four key areas moving forward over the next three to four years. The areas are very specific in many ways to Tukahoe, and they will become more specific through the action plans. In other ways, they are areas that across our nation, we know in 2019 and 2020, we must put more emphasis on, and mostly because of that description of our Gen Z generation and what they need. So in no priority order here, the first goal is about social and emotional learning, and that lands us right where we described our students as experiencing a lot of stress and anxiety, and really finding their place at younger and younger ages on developing relationships, making decisions, self-management, self-responsibility, self-awareness. And so it's a very important place to start, and we know that these skills are both teachable and learnable. No, they're not something Cynthia has and I don't, right? They're just, they're teachable and they're learnable. And so it was a very strong path of reflection that led the Tukahoe Leadership Group to land on a goal for social and emotional learning. And we want to be clear that this is all children, right? This isn't just children in crisis, or children with an exceptional need at a moment. This is all children who need to really focus on their self-skills and knowing themselves, and when things aren't strong, knowing how to get assistance and support. And so the action plan tied to that really focuses on those describable, learnable skills, a lot of the research from Cassel, which is our national sort of go-to research base on social and emotional learning, as well as some work out of Yale with Mark Brackett's work called "The Ruler Approach," just its name, "The Ruler Approach." And your leaders across the district in classrooms and counseling offices have begun to look very, very closely at those two bases of research, and have already started to align recommended reading for September for all faculty members and support staff, have started to look at professional development opportunities, and what will be part of children understanding not only themselves, but their sense of belonging. No child anywhere, and I'll say no adult, wants to walk into a place of learning or a group with other people and not feel a very strong sense of belonging. Whatever your interests, whatever your positions, whatever your views and beliefs or home experiences, children do not learn at their best if they don't know themselves well and have a strong sense of belonging. So it's a very, very important goal, and the action plan for it is very specific, and the wheels are in motion already through a committee that has met this year and through the Action Plan Committee, to have that work well underway for September. The second area of focus is diverse needs of learners, and I want to be able to frame that the right way, focusing on the diverse needs, right? That you have children who are very accelerated, who come to you as five-year-olds as very strong leaders, learners, readers, mathematicians, and you have children who come with not that depth of experience yet, or not that depth of accomplishment yet. And so this is really meeting every child where she lives, right? It's about the need for acceleration, as well as the need for supports. And really, it supports even for the accelerated child, right? How to find out exactly what kind of personalized learning or individual goals are needed. And so this is multifaceted. There is a section in the action plan specifically addressing the needs of English language learners. There's a section addressing the needs of those students who need to catch up, right, and really accelerate their learning to get on grade level so that they can be solid performers and solid achievers. There's an emphasis on your newly planned "WIN" period, and you've heard it maybe referred to as a flex period, or a focus period, or a genius hour in other schools, but "WIN," you know, what I need. I need advanced work, I need enrichment, I need something that would come from what we might in previous times called a gifted program, but what we really know now is really solid individualized opportunities for students. Or I need strengthening in a specific skill in order to move forward. It also really focuses on data. What do we know? And are we making the best use of the achievement data and the student profile that we have in hand for every learner? And whether that's state standardized testing or classroom assessments, what is it that we really know about each child and what that child needs to accelerate? Not good enough to be on grade level, and not good enough to be in the middle of a pack on standardized testing, if there's so much more that a child both wants and is ready for. So some of that is also about student interests, and we'll see that again under contemporary Under contemporary learning and teaching, it is 2019, and your kindergarteners are going to graduate in 2032, and that means that we have to capitalize on the technology. This is not just a new notebook for kids, right? It's not just about asking Siri a question and getting an answer. How are we capitalizing on the use of technology so that technology leads our children to create and to collaborate and to reach different learning communities outside of their four walls of their classroom? It also means that we need to focus on what innovation looks like and how the district both nurtures innovation, fosters innovation, creates a culture for innovation. And I'd like to emphasize that that innovation is not just for children, but for adults, that adults need to take risks in their instruction in order to meet the needs of these young learners, and we need to know what they want to learn. So student interest surveys are a very important piece of what the district can do for children every year, knowing what they really care about outside of the school curriculum or in addition to the school curriculum. So an innovation team is an important step in this action team, and it will meet the needs of all learners, but really focusing on the innovator's mindset, how to make room for innovation, how to plan new programs and pilots, how to take some risks, is an important thing. You know, your children are entering a world of great creativity, a lot of independence and collaboration at the same time in our workplaces, and a world of great entrepreneurship, where they really need to know what it takes to take an idea and grow it, right? And so, there's another piece in here that will extend even the model internships that you witnessed tonight, that will extend possible individual research opportunities for students, even our young students. We see children fourth grade and up really successful with independent individual research on things in which they have a great interest. The third area is professional learning, and none of this happens without the adults learning at twice the speed, or even half the speed, of the children, right? Being able to say that the classroom is a different place these days. It is teacher-designed, but not teacher-driven, right? We have student voice and student agency and student collaboration much more in the fore of what happens in a classroom than anything that I probably experienced, certainly, but that teacher as not the deliverer of information, because Siri does that, right? But the teacher as the guide for discovery and creativity and collaboration. So what does a classroom look like in 2019 and beyond, is a critical question. How do our adults learn? Because just like it's not about seat time for our children anymore, it is not about seat time for our adults. So how you reach job-embedded professional learning, different models for professional learning, it's not one-size-fits-all, everyone in a room learning the same thing. It's what do we need, these three teachers? What do these eight teachers need? What does this individual teacher need in order to go back to the classroom in the weeks ahead, apply new learning, reflect upon that learning, come back and discuss it, and move forward in that same cycle again and again and again? That might sound like, "Don't we do that now?" But I have to say that most faculty members will say anything that's truly specialized for them, they do independently on their own, and that's a great thing, but we want to be sure that collectively, there's a place to archive great lessons, there's a place to archive videos of exceptional lessons, so that those can be replicated and not just stay in a classroom with one adult, right? Or maybe have an observer one day. But we need to share the best of the best across the faculty. Aligning and being sure that that alignment, as close as Cottle is, like I could even throw the stone down the street probably to Cottle, but as close as it is, the bells keep ringing and the days keep flowing, and it's very hard for people with articulation to be in the same place and talk about what's happened in grade four, five, in order to connect tightly to grade six, seven, and what's happened in seven, eight, to connect tightly to nine and 10. And we just know matter-of-factly that that's critically important for our children as learners and for our adults who are planning, right? To have that flow and that understanding. And the fourth goal, I'm sorry, I got it. So, sorry, I'm not counting well tonight, but we hit four. Those all together, I want to mention that they don't stand alone as silos. There is integration and interface among the four. When you look at contemporary learning and innovation, and you think about how to reach diverse learners, there's an interface there. Certainly, there's an interface with everything from professional learning and what we need to do to move these other goals forward, and for adults to really be on board with this. And that leads me to the fact that while this seemed and was a great body of work for many people across the district to be engaged in this year, one or the other thing is going to happen with us, and there's no in-between. People will say, "Hooray, we completed a strategic plan, and we have goals that might be on a website," and it'll die. Or there'll be a deep understanding that anyone who's associated with the Tukahoe Public Schools understands the four goals, knows his or her role attached to the four goals, and that the execution and communication around these will indeed enable everyone to thrive around the goals. And so the next steps really have to do with communication and execution. You have a nice roadmap for each of the four goals, which many committee members have worked on. There are some things that you'll adjust that need to be strengthened, or in six months you'll say, "This needs to hop up to a higher priority, we see what's happening here, other voices have come in and we've learned something." So to be flexible with this is very important. To let it fall to the wayside and not be at the board level two, three times a year to say, "What's the progress look like?" You will be able, if these plans are followed, you'll be able to have mission moments tied to your strategic goals for years to come around the work that will be done. That's sort of nine months of your work in a nutshell. There is much more to this. There is a working document of an action plan with greater detail for each of these goals that your faculty members and administrators have been working on, and since the goals were set before the budget was set, some of the budget has been aligned with these goals as well. Certainly, some of your facilities work has been aligned with these goals. Certainly, some of your facilities work has been aligned with these goals, and you're in a great place, a really good place, to take this as a springboard to make it matter for every child, you know? The most advanced child, the most detached child, the child you haven't met yet, the many children you haven't met yet who will come into the district. The goals here, working together, can serve them all very, very well. I am grateful. Everyone in this room right now, I think, has played a very, very important role in leading this work and having a voice in this work. And it's not a document that's in concrete. It will flow. It will be flexible, and it will continue to serve you well, I believe. So I'm grateful to the work of many in getting this work to this stage, and I think that Superintendent Albano is ready to launch it full force.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you very much. I just need to really emphasize that so many people volunteered their time to contribute to what is being presented to the board this evening, from the 24 people on the strategic leadership team-
Yes.
-that gave up two full days, and many of our parents are here with us in the audience this evening, and then to the action plan development teams. Our administrators teamed up with teachers. We were very strategic about if we had a secondary administrator-
Co-chairs.
-with a co-chair with an elementary person to try to get different perspectives. As you emphasize, this is for all children. They worked very, very hard, but they also pulled in many key faculty members. I look over there at Andrew Colaschino, who is doing so many different things and so well, but he also contributed-
Yes.
...to this plan, and I just thank everyone. It's been many months of hard work, and I do believe this truly represents a collective knowledge and a collective vision for our district. It is not my plan. It is not Dr. McDonald's plan. It really came together with everyone's perspective, and you facilitated that beautifully, Judy.
It was a privilege.
So really, it's been a pleasure going through this process with you. Would you like to just speak about, you know, formalizing this and next steps and maybe-
Yes.
-share a little bit of what Ellen and I spoke with you about?
Yes. So make sure I hit every point, but the action plans, as they roll out, are prioritized. So while they have many, many components to them, there are starting points identified for each action plan so that that can be known to everyone right away. There's also a communication plan that Superintendent Albano and I will work on in terms of the entire community understanding the goals and the work of the district. I also have to say that people will look at the plans and say, "Oh, there's a little piece I wish were emphasized in a different way," or "There's another piece here," or "There's..." I want to say that in the action plans, it'll probably all be there and roll out in really full fashion. I think that every child, I really believe that this is not an action plan or a strategic plan that emphasizes only, you know, the middle child or the advanced learner or just the elementary school. This is a full K-12 every-child plan. There might be other points you'd like me to speak to.
No, no, I think, and Ellen, feel free to jump in, but what we discussed, you know, next steps, I do think the board, this is the first time, and we're missing some board members, but-
Yes.
-you know, I think they need to really go through this carefully-
Yes.
-process all the information, be able to ask questions of the admin team, and we're happy to answer them. Typically, every summer, we have a board retreat. I think this has to be-
This should be a very big part of them.
A big part of our summer retreat.
Those hours, yes.
And I anticipate, Michelle, having the board formally adopt the plan as we roll it out for the new year.
Yes.
I'm proud to say that the admin team has already begun work.
Yes.
And they're moving forward.
And are ready and well-aligned.
And as you point out, the capital project, certainly some of the things we're doing, particularly down at Cottle with the new innovation space, will support this perfectly, and we're very excited about that. So Ellen, would you like to add anything? You've been a key part of this.
A very key part of it.
Yes, as we, one of the things that we knew going into this process, we said one of the, I guess, key differences between this strategic plan and the prior strategic plan is that this one is really fully focused on teaching and learning, right? That you didn't hear about putting our fiscal house in order. You didn't hear about getting our physical space in work, because we did a bond for that. We did a strategic plan and did some great work to get to this point, to really be able to focus now in on, all-in on teaching and learning. And that's what makes it exciting and a little overwhelming for me, because that's what I do. But it is such a great opportunity to give voice to all the possibilities and to be able to see, where can we go? And I've always said, wherever I've been, if there's a strategic plan, that's our roadmap. We know what matters to this community. If it's built properly with all those voices that Judy mentioned, then you know you've got it right, and you know you've got what your community's looking for, and it's going to be able to map it to the future for you. So I'm very excited about all the things that we're going to be able to create with it, and I was most involved in the contemporary teaching and learning co-chairing that with the very wonderful Jen Girardi down at Cottle, and we had come up with a concept that you're going to hear over the next few years that's called "Going from Realistic to Real." So get ready to hear that phrase, RTR instead of RTI. It's RTR, get ready. And really looking at these creative things that we've done and taking them from being realistic, writing an essay about something to convince your classmates, to real, writing an essay to your congressperson to convince him of something. From realistic, let's play with a menu and come up with a tax and a tip, to real, let's actually go to that restaurant and actually buy something and pay the tax and the tip. Really getting our students from a place of really cool stuff to really real experiences. And that's what we're hoping will be one of the things that comes out of it, that we can inspire that creativity in our teachers to think outside the classroom box to the world box, because technology allows us to do that, to connect with anyone, anywhere, and to be able to take those risks and know that we are supporting that as a district, those risks of saying, "Hmm, I'm not going to do this the same way anymore. I really want to leverage this in a different way," and have all of us say, "Yes, yes, let's support you in that." So we are very excited about that work.
And so are we.
Yeah.
And I could say I have waited so long, really, to hear everything that you've had to say. I really, I was writing down so many different things, I didn't know where to start. But I do think that one of the overall advantages we have here at Tuckahoe is our smallness. And I think sometimes there is this advantage, you know, the pros and cons of being small. But I think the important thing that we need to remember is families choose the smallness when they come here. So how do we take that smallness and how do we, you know, really take advantage of that? And one of the things that you said that I really, really embrace is the individualized opportunity for all students. We are so small. We should be able to do that and really customize a learning opportunity for every student. And like Ellen said, it has taken us a very long time to get here, because we did have to get our fiscal house in order. We did have to get a lot of things in order to now be able to do that. So I think really for us, what's most exciting is, okay, so how are we going to do this? You know, so, okay, this all sounds, and now how do we do it? And show us how we can do it so that we can support that. So I thank you for your presentation and all the work that it took to get there. I really think it was very easy to understand and where you were going with it, and it wasn't complex in any way, and it was really what I believe we needed and a great way to end our year, because it really does open up the opportunities for what's to follow. So thank you. Thank you for all of that. And all of the administrators, and Carl, and all of our principals, and Ellen, and the teachers who volunteered to be on these committees, put a lot of time in, our two board members, Rob Seifer and Cynthia Tate, who took time from work. It was a two-day session, and that's a big commitment. And our PTA for being there and really wanting to be a part of it. I mean, I think the parents really expressed it was important that they played a role. So to see that it really organically came together from everybody, I think, is what makes it really so special. And I think what you said also, Judy, about everybody knowing it, learning it, and it's really the roadmap, and we have to be committed to it. So everybody who's now coming in, this is it. You know, this is where we are. So I really think that there is something here really exciting. It's an exciting future for us in Tuckahoe, and I thank you for that, for that work.
And Cynthia, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you said it all. You said it all. No, I mean, it was a pleasure, honestly. Like, those two days were, I was happy to take them off. I mean, a lot of people in this room were there, too. I think just the energy of it and the excitement of everyone wanting to do, to like, create these goals was really amazing to watch.
Okay. All right, did anyone have any comments from the... Tara, did you want to add anything about them, too?
I think she does. I've been watching your-
You'd have to come to the microphone.
She does.
Having thought about anything to offer, but I do echo Cynthia's comments about the energy in the room that day and yours as well, Michelle, about the parent involvement in this process. I was a part of that process with a number of PTA representatives, and every single one of them said to me in one way or another after the fact how excited they were to be a part of that process and how much just thought and insight and dialogue and communication happened over those days, and how much everybody was very, very focused upon what the community was looking for. And I think that that is a very important theme as we move forward, is to bear in mind that this is the result of what the community has asked for, not just the parents but the teachers and everybody. We had community responses, from what I heard, that were like very unusual, you know?
In number.
In number. So that as the board moves forward and as we, as things are being put before the board, that maintain that theme, that this is what the community is really looking for, and this is what Tuckahoe wants now. And then I will say, as from the PTA's perspective, we are happy to support these goals. We will focus on these goals as much as we can in our own planning and know that you can come to us if there are things that you do need support with, and we would like to continue to be a part of the process and know how we can continue to be part of the dialogue and moving Tuckahoe forward. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Tara. Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? No. Okay. So we will meet again next Monday, June 10th. That will be our last formal board meeting of the school year, and that's it until then, right? Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.